First of all, I'd like to welcome all of you here to Revere City Hall. On a very proud day, I know, for all of you that are here. I'm the mayor, I'm Mayor Dan Rizzo. And I'm here with our city council president, Ira Novoselfsky. And some city councilors that are sitting behind us. We have city councillor Brian Origo, city councillor John Correggio, city councillor Charlie Patch, city councillor Richard Penta, and city councillor John Powers. And councillor Zambudo, councillor Tony Zambudo is coming in as we speak. But we all wanted to be here with you today in this very special celebration. This, as much as it's a celebration for you and your parents, it's really a celebration for our entire city. And so, on behalf of the entire city, I want to tell all of you kids how proud we are of the great job that you did for all of us. How about a nice round of applause for all of our... Before we give out some citations that we've prepared for you, I just want to talk about, this is mostly, I mean, obviously, the parents in the back of the room understand what you had to go through to get all of this notoriety and to win the championship the way you did. It was an awful lot of work. And I want to make sure that people who aren't here or didn't have to, you know, weren't really aware of what goes into this. I want to make them aware of how much hard work that you kids had to do to make it as far as you did. The season begins on August 1st, where you practice for four nights a week. And then, once school starts, now you practice three nights a week. Because we all know that grades, obviously, are the most important thing, right? So, but, so, you know, your coaches, you know, they do the right thing. They cut it down. But then, you practice three nights a week, and then you have your games on Sunday, right? So, anyway, as you get into your competition, the first competition is the GBL competition, which is held in October. And the squads need to place in the top two to move on. And all squads did that. And they went on to the Eastern Mass competition, which is at the Saugus Arena in Lowell. And again, you had to finish in the top two to move on. And all four squads, not only finished in the top two, but all four squads finished winning first place, which I believe was the first time that ever happened with the city. So, what a great, what a great accomplishment. You then moved on to a third round, again in Springfield, where three of the four squads were fortunate enough to finish in the top two. And then, move on to the regionals, which was held at the Mass Mutual Center in Springfield. And this is where you all compete to go to Disney World, right? And again, you must finish in the top two. And all squads, all three teams, finished in the top two and went on to Disney World. What a great achievement. And, you know, so now you went on, you made us proud here locally. You went out to Springfield, you made us all proud here again. And now, you went down to Florida, and you showed the whole country what you can do. And you all did a tremendous job. The A squad, under the direction of head coach Meredith Steverinos and her assistants Carolyn DeMers and Kristen Turnuolo, took third place in the Nationals. Great job. The D squad, under the direction of head coach Gina Raffa and her assistants Nicole Capozzi and Lucia Morano, they finished second place. And last, but certainly not least, is our C squad. Under the direction of head coach Melissa Elm and her assistants Anne Mendonka and Drew Nagy, they won a second back-to-back national championship finishing first. So, you know, I just thought, and the city council, sitting here behind me, thought that that was just really so impressive for a group of kids, a young group of kids, like, you know, like you, to be able to practice as hard as you did and accomplish, you know, everything that you did. This is just a small token of the city's appreciation for all your dedication, hard work. And I know I speak on behalf of all of my colleagues, all of these councilors that are here with us. And I know Senator Petraselli was up here to spend some time with you earlier tonight. We just want to wish you, and we know you're going to have continued success. So, congratulations to all you, all you kids. Okay, do you want to... Okay, so, we're going to do the A squad first, okay? And I'll just read one of the certificates. And I'll just call your names after that. So, this is just one, in no particular order. It reads, "A certificate of commendation. An acknowledgement of your outstanding athletic accomplishments as a member of the Revere Pop Warner A Squad Cheerleaders in becoming the 2012 Midget Level 3 Medium Third Place National Champions at the National Pop Warner Cheerleading Championship held at the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in Disney. Special recognition is hereby accorded to..." Brianna Bessler. Is Brianna here? Hi, Brianna. "This certificate of commendation is presented by the mayor of the city of Revere along with the Revere City Council on behalf of its citizens this 28th day of January in the year of our Lord 2013 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 236th." And all of these are signed by our city clerk, Ashley Melnick. I don't see Ashley here, but Ashley Melnick, along with myself, the mayor, Dan Rizzo. So, congratulations. Amanda Capola. Camilla Cordoba-Echeverry. Lorraine DePaula. Is Lorraine here? Not here, okay. Rita Zapina. Laura DeSouza. Danielle Dion. Katherine Alom. Alexandra Esposito. Trina Ford. Gianna LaRose. Emily Lorena. Gina Viarella. Jamie Ling Turco Burnett. Mariana Rocabato. Brianna Quintana. Kiana Napolitano. Kayla Perez. Lexi Nagy. Julia Murray. Brittany McCarthy. You just overpowered them with pure numbers. This is unbelievable, great, big-sized teams. Alexis McCaffrey. Gabriella Martinelli. The coaches, the head coach, Meredith Steverinos. Assistant coach, Kristen Turnuolo. And assistant coach Carolyn DeMers. Okay, we're now going to move on to the members of the D squad and their coaches. And again, this reads, I'll read this one because it does read a little bit differently. "An acknowledgement of your outstanding athletic accomplishments as a member of the Revere Pop Warner D Squad Cheerleaders in becoming the 2012 Medium Junior Pee-wee Level 1 Second Place National Champions at the National Pop Warner Cheerleading Championships held at the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in Disney. Special recognition is hereby accorded to..." Kaylee Alba, is Kaylee here? Okay. Hold on, Kaylee, one second. "This certificate of commendation is presented by the mayor and city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of all of its citizens this 28th day of January in the year of our Lord 2013 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 236th." So, great job, congratulations. Haley Belley. Vanessa Cabrera. Emily Childs. Sydney Siano. Gianna Kalella. Angelina Coughlin. Adriana Keef. Olivia Martinez-Havi. Bryn McManus. Kaitlyn Mendalka. Gina Hearn. Olivia Osborne. Juliana Raffa. Amanda Reyes. Lolita Rodriguez. Mia Rogers. Navaya Taylor. Isabel, Isabel Talez. Ava Wizwall. The head coach, Gina Raffa. Assistant coach, Nicole Capozzi. And assistant coach, Lucia Morano. This certificate reads, "An acknowledgement of your outstanding athletic accomplishments as a member of the Revere Pop Warner C Squad Cheerleaders in becoming the 2012 Small Pee-wee Level 2 National Champions at the National Pop Warner Cheerleading Championships held at the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in Disney. Special recognition is hereby accorded to..." Alyssa Adams. "This certificate of commendation is presented by the mayor and city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 28th day of January in the year of our Lord 2013 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 236th." Congratulations to the national champion, Pop Warner C Squad. Congratulations. Lilly Baushner. Isabella Dampier. Sophia Gendrow. Jessica Hagerty. Melanie Leonard. Nicole Mendonka. Alexa Panzini. Okay, I know that we have one of your teammates, Hannah Poole, who I guess called in and is not feeling too well. But I'm sure we'll get this to her, so, nice round of applause for Hannah. Madeline Stewart. Jordan Sullivan. Taylor Sullivan. Head coach, Melissa Elm. Assistant coach, Anna Mendonka. And last but not least, assistant coach Drew Nagy. We also want to recognize some people here, some members of the board, and people that help keep the league running, obviously, very smoothly and successfully. So, this certificate reads, it's a certificate of commendation. "An acknowledgement of your hard work and efforts in leading the Revere Pop Warner C Squad Cheerleaders to their 2012 Pee-wee Level 2 Small Division Championship and in leading the Revere Pop Warner A Squad and D Squad Cheerleaders to a run at the national title at the National Pop Warner Cheerleading Championships held at the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in Disney. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Paul Baushner, Revere Pop Warner president." "This certificate of commendation is presented by the mayor and city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 28th day of January in the year of our Lord 2013 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 236th." It's signed by our city clerk, Ashley Melnick, and myself, Mayor Dan Rizzo. And I know with all my colleagues here behind me, we want to congratulate you and thank you for all the hard work that you do, Paul. Thank you very, very much. Want to say a few words at all? They always have to force me into saying something. Wow, did it again, huh, girls? I think next year, when we bring our fourth team, plus some of the boys, I think we're going to have to do it someplace else, okay? Maybe at our new stadium, if we could ever get that deal done. I just want to say, um, thank you to all the parents. Thank you, Mayor Rizzo. Thank you to the council. And really, I want to thank the citizens of Revere. Because sending three teams to Florida was not a small accomplishment. The financial burden around Christmas time for some of these families, mostly everybody, is overwhelming. And what we did was, we went out pretty much door-to-door. We went out canning. And the support from the city itself, you know, I can't even put into words what that means. You know, oftentimes, we get, you know, the bad about what happens in Revere. You know, and a lot of the citizens kind of fall into that. But when these girls went out door-to-door, and these girls were asking for help and support, the city actually stood up and really got behind these girls. And, you know, the applause should go to you guys as parents and also the citizens. Really helped us out. You know, and also, you said earlier, Mayor Rizzo, about the commitment it takes, you know, not only for, you know, the parents to get the kids to practice, but also our coaches, our board members, who work hard, day in and day out. They're regular jobs, plus they work, it's not three days a week for them. It's seven days a week. It's 52 weeks a year for them. They don't stop when the tournaments are over. They're going all year round. So, I'd like to make sure that they've got a really standing ovation because they're what makes this program run. You know, and I just wanted to say a couple of things as I look back on the season. You know, and to me, being the president, I have the privilege of being backstage with these young ladies, you know, throughout the competitions. And you see the clean routines when they come out, and they nail their routines, and they go back, and, but you don't see the behind-the-scenes. You know, this year, we've had some injuries with girls. And they still make the practices. They still make the competitions. And we still had one of the young ladies went to Florida. That must have been hard, not to be able to compete, but still support their team and go to Florida and watch them win and support them. And I'd like to give a hand. You know, I always say, and I think Amanda, I say to Amanda Capola, "Stop talking." I say to her, "It's like a sisterhood." And it really is. I'm watching in Florida, and we're watching one of the teams 30 seconds before they're going on, they're practicing. And one of the stunts aren't hitting, they're falling. And the girls are getting nervous, and they're panicking. You know, they're right at the door to go on, and they all gather together and say, "Don't worry about it. You know, let's just go out there and do it, and no matter what happens, we still love you and we're still proud of you." That, to me, is the sisterhood. That, to me, is where it all boils down to and why these girls succeed and why these girls are where they are. They not only take pride in themselves, they take pride in each other, and they take pride in their community. And to me, that's what really got these girls to the level that they're at in the championship. So, girls, give yourselves a hand, because you make us all proud. Thanks. Okay, we just have a couple more. Again, a certificate of commendation will be presented to Carolyn DeMers. For her work. As the Revere Pop Warner cheer coordinator, congratulations. Great job. And our other Revere Pop Warner co-chair coordinator, Marcy Tango. Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm just going to conclude my remarks before I introduce our city council president, Ira Novoselfsky, to say a few words. But again, I just want to tell you that the hard work that you do, it's got to be so rewarding to you and the commitment that your parents make to make sure that they get you to practice and that you're, you know, able to get all your work done, your homework and all that stuff. It really is just such a credit to you and your families. You should all just be so very, very proud of you. I know that we all are here at City Hall, and I know across the city, as President Baushner just alluded to, the support that I know the community lent to the cause and to, you know, really step up and help you, help you all accomplish or help you on the road to get to a point where you at least could compete, you know, shows that the entire community really is very, very proud of you. So, thank you and keep up the good work. We're all very, very proud, and we're looking forward to many more ceremonies like this because we got a room full of champions here. I know we're going to see it again soon, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to acknowledge a couple of councils that came in a little late. Council Bob Hess and Council Arthur Guanasso. I know, I know how hard it is for what you folks went through. You know, when I was in high school, my team won a national championship. They sent us to Florida. And it was the most difficult thing to help to raise the money. And I'm glad that the city came through for you in all aspects. I know all our councilors supported you. We dug into our pockets several times to do that, and it was our pleasure to do that. But for your national champions, what's going to happen tonight at the Revere City Council is that we will be passing a motion to install signs entering every border of the city of Revere, welcoming everybody to the home of the national champions of our Revere Pop Warner. And I know it'll take a couple of months to get them up, so it probably won't be till late spring before it happens. But you'll all be surprised when you see them. We did it for our, I think, 2008 high school champions. And we put them up around the city, and we're going to do it again for you folks. And hopefully, again, next year, we'll do them again for all the teams. So, thank you all for coming, to all my councils. We thank them. We wish you well. We wish you good grades in school. And I know you're already good kids, so I don't have to say that. And thank you to the parents for putting up with these kids and supporting them and supporting them for everything that they went through, because it's not easy. easy, and I appreciate it through you, because I can appreciate it, because my grandchildren are in basketball, so I know what you're going through, and they're only five and 12 years old. So, good luck to you parents, keep the good work going for the kids, support them 1,000%. They need it. Good luck, and God will. Good night, and I'm sorry.